All right, so good evening. It is Wednesday, October 6, 2011. Before I begin, I know it is posted as both a work session and special meeting, but I am going to roll right into the special meeting this evening as the superintendent informed me that there's no updates to talk about. And we're going to make the review of the financial statements part of the special meeting. So with that, I am going to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So, good evening, everyone. I just want to remind the audience that there's exits at the rear of the auditorium and, of course, at each side of the stage. We are streaming tonight's meeting, and I believe we're going to get into the practice of streaming both. We already announced that we're streaming our business meetings, and I believe we're going to get into the practice of streaming work sessions as well. This happened to be posted as a work session and special meeting, so because it was posted as a special meeting is the reason that we're streaming it, but I do believe we'll get into the practice of posting both. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our system superintendent, Ms. Kostangue.
Thank you. So tonight, we have the report on our year-end financial statement, year-end June 30, 2021. We have Mr. Allen Yu, who's the partner from Colin and Denowski, which is the firm we use for our external audit. And he's going to be talking to the board. And then we also have Mr. Alan Goldstein, who's on the audit committee meeting, audit committee, and he will also speak large to the financial statements.
Great. So, Mr. Yu, this floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Kanberg, and thank you, Mrs. Kostangue. Good evening. My name is Allen Yu. I am an audit partner from the firm Colin Denowski. The School Board of Education has appointed my firm to be the external auditor of your school district. So what we did was, we audited the school district's financial statements for the year end of June 30, 2021. And as part of that audit process, we also reviewed the district's internal controls over financial reporting and your compliance with laws and regulations. I'm happy to report to you that we were able to issue clean opinions about your district's internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. We didn't have any reportable findings. And we revisited the recommendations that we made to the district management last year, and we could tell that, we could see that a number of our recommendations have already been implemented, and a few more are currently underway. So that's very encouraging. That means that your district management takes our recommendation seriously. So when we return for next year's audit, we will once again revisit any remaining recommendations to see whether or not the corrective actions have been fully implemented. Okay? On the financial statements, I'm also happy to report to you that we are issuing, we have issued an unmodified opinion on both your school district's financial statements as well as the extra classroom activity fund financial statements. That means that your, the financial statements were free of material misstatements and that they were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Okay? Financially, your district's general fund, which is the main operating fund, is stable. For the fiscal year end of June 30, 2021, the general fund ended the year with an operating surplus of slightly over $1 million. And total, and your total fund balance as a result of that increase stays at a little bit under 17% of your actual expenditures. That's roughly about two months' worth of operating expenses in your, in your overall general fund reserve, which includes a capital reserve, which is used for construction activities that would allow you to be able to carry out much-needed capital construction projects without the need to go out and borrow. Okay? And so that will result in savings, obviously, to the taxpayers. Okay? So the two months, the two months, or 16%, 17%, for, for me, that's a very reasonable benchmark because that is in line with what the GFOA, Government's Finance Officers Association, their recommendation of having at least two months of operating expenses in your fund balance. On the revenue side, compared to the 2019-2020 fiscal year, general fund revenues went up by about $947,000. And it primarily came from property tax, tax increase, as well as payment in lieu of taxes, pilot revenues. And on the other non-property tax revenues, state aid actually went down by about $348,000, although your district did receive some CARES Act federal funding in the amount of about On this, on the expenditure side, total expenditures compared to the previous fiscal year went up by about $3.4 million. However, about $1.5 million were due to transfer to the capital projects fund. So without those, taking those transfers out of the, the expenditures equation, total expenditures, operating expenditures, went up by about $1.86 million. And, you know, much of the increase was in the salaries, about $1.2 million. And employee benefits also went up by about $1 million. Okay? And there are some savings on your debt service because the 2015 refunding bond issue, the debt service for which we're finished back in the 2019-2020 fiscal year, and therefore the, the overall debt service expenditures for the current year actually went down by, by about $1 million. So overall, once again, your, your district financially is in good shape. It's, it's stable. You don't have excessive fund balance in relation to, compared, especially compared to some of the other school districts in Nassau County. And your district management, again, they took our recommendations seriously, and they were implementing corrective actions. And even with the, some of the ongoing recommendations, you can see in the management letter that district management already has planned corrective action underway. Okay? So I'm pleased to report to you that your district business office operations are running very smoothly. And I want to thank Dr. Canis, as well as the Mrs. Kostangue for, and their staff, obviously, for helping us complete the audit on time. And after this meeting, the audit reports will then be, after the board officially accepts the audit reports, they will be then submitted to the State Counselors Office as well as the SED, the State Education Department.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yu. Thank you. We know this process is timely, so thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the audit committee a second. I just want to confirm a couple of things. Clean opinions, terrific. Unmodified opinion on the financial statements and the extra classroom activity report grade. And I just want to hone in on your statement when you just said, once again, this district is in a sound, good financial opinion. I mean, you've been working, you've been this district's external auditor for a number of years now, and I think that we've received this opinion. I couldn't even tell you how many years at this point is that.
Right, every year. And, and I want to emphasize that your, your district has, is one of the very few that I personally service and that have a really robust audit committee. You have professionals, accounting professionals, as well as, you know, some board members sitting on the audit committee, and they take their role and responsibilities very seriously. The audit committee meetings are always a welcoming challenge, okay? But that also means that the, the oversight from the community is, is very, very significant. And, and, and I think administration can certainly attest to that. So I, I, as you noted, I have been your auditors for a number of years now, so I certainly understand the philosophy of this community. You, you, you understand the need to have reserves and fund balance, but at the same time, you're, you're finding the right balance to make sure that you don't have excessive fund balance. And certainly, having another very robust finance committee and budget committee, that's also, you know, that's also very helpful for the school district and community.
Great. So before I take questions from the board, if there are any, let's just turn it over to Ms. Alan Goldstein, who's a representative tonight from the audit committee. And I appreciate, Mr. Yu, your shout-out to the audit committee because really, you know, this committee, as well as all the committees of the board, and quite frankly, all the committees of district, people give hundreds of hours of their time. This committee in particular gives a great amount of time, meetings going late until the night, although this year, we seem to do pretty well. The reports seem to be okay. It didn't go quite as well. But, Mr. Goldstein, I hope, if, are you gonna announce all the names of the members of the committee?
I wasn't planning to, but I don't have it here with, well, let's see, do I have it here?
It's all right, I can get, I can come back.
Okay, yeah, I do have it. So the, Alan Goldstein, member of the audit committee, Pat Gillespie, Andrew Perrant, oh, Andrew Dulos, sorry, and Maureen Murphy, Melissa Kirchner. Those are the members of, and we're looking for more volunteers, please.
We are.
So I, I took some copies, but I wrote down some things, basically parroting what Mr. Yu said. We're, we're, we had a very robust meeting last Thursday, the audit committee reviewing the 80-plus pages in the, in the audit report. We're, we're pleased to hear that it's both, it's got the clean opinion and unmodified opinion, and that the district's financial position is in good shape. We're very happy to see that the district continues to take the fine auditor's recommendation seriously, and nearly all the findings from the previous year are, are either completed or in the midst of being completed. We, as the audit committee, recommend that the board accept the audit reports as, as written and as presented. And I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Great. So any board members have questions?
Allen, I just want to make a, I want to echo what everyone's been saying about how great this committee is, and I also want to do a shout-out to how many, how many, is it a whole decade, or is it more than a decade you've been on this committee?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It's, it's any time.
But in any event, it's been a long time.
Between this and the other one, yes.
Yes, it's been a long time, and we can't thank you enough. You, you've out-served most of the board that's sitting here. So thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you.
No, just to add also, this committee has unbelievable technical, technical expertise, which is really valued.
Any questions?
Actually, Mr. Hirsch and Mr. Keev, you know, they were also present at last week's audit committee meeting.
I was there, too.
I'm sorry, of course.
So I just want to confirm, Mr. Goldstein, it is your recommendation to adopt the reports as is?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Yu, we thank you. Mr. Goldstein, we thank you, and we thank all our members of the committee very much. Just before I move to the action items, I just remind, remind members of the public that it is a requirement that we wear masks inside our building. So if anyone in the auditorium is not wearing a mask, we ask that you please put your masks on. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to move into the action items. I'm going to take, typically, we take the questions at the end, but because it's a special meeting, Mr. Gulyamo, I'll be happy to take your question, yes.
Is there any, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's no problem.
So that's why I only ask, otherwise, I'd wait till the end.
No problem.
So I, I just had a question, a comparative question in terms of other school districts. And I'm not gonna ask you to mention names, obviously, you just keep that general, but so the last two budgets, we've been at about 93% of spent budget. Now, you can understand why because COVID-19 just screwed up a lot of things, and we wouldn't be at 93% if COVID never existed. Prior to that, we're roughly around 97 or so. So the last two school budgets, when you look at comparative data, what percentage are they at under COVID? Are they at 91, are they at 96? Rough numbers.
So as far as your school districts, East Wilston is concerned?
No, no.
Or other school districts?
No, I, I know where we're at.
Mr. Gulyamo, it's very, to the 97% spend a budget here to here.
Actually, a lot of. I'm asking you that the last two years.
Right.
For other school districts, not mentioning names.
Right.
If we're at 93%, what are other school districts looking at? Because I, I, I'm just kind of trying to get a comparative look.
Right, understood.
I don't go to those budget meetings.
Right, understood. Last year, you know, under, because of COVID, a lot of districts were actually in about 91%, 90, 91%. And, and, and before then, they were typically in about anywhere from 90% to 95% range. Okay? So a lot of districts are in, are in those range.
So 90 to 90, when you said 90 to 95, did you mean before COVID?
Before COVID, correct.
And then the last year for COVID, the school districts were at about 90?
A lot of districts were about, in about, at around 91%.
91. So, so we've actually spent more than some other school districts.
Right. As you noted, you know, pre-COVID, your budget has always been, you know, quite tight, you know, in a nice way.
Well, yeah, well, I think it's a good thing because if, if you're underspending the budget, then, you know, why, you know, why are you passing increases? You know, when you, you know?
Right.
Like, in the world that I work, if you don't spend the money, you lose the money.
Right.
It doesn't quite work in this way, but.
Yeah.
We have a different model where we, where we.
Right.
Fund capital, projects, and so on.
Well, that's exactly right. With, with school districts, you know, because of the ability to establish capital reserve, where you can, you can, not only legally, but, but, you know, in a good way, this is a good way to return any surplus to the community by, by setting up, establishing capital reserves and then funding the capital reserves when you have the surplus, so that you don't need to go out and, and borrow.
Well, absolutely, then you don't have to pay the interests.
That's exactly right. Interest plus, there's a borrowing cost. And a lot of people kept saying, well, right now, interest, you know, it's cheap money, but it still costs you interest. Plus, you know, you don't have, you know, that kind of building aid percentage. You're not getting, you know, a lot of return from, in terms of state aid. A lot of communities that have a higher, they call it building aid ratio, that's how they would explain or sell to their community that, that why they should pass this bond, you know, whatever bond issue they, that they were trying to pass, because, you know, net-net, because of the building aid that they would get back from the state over time, that it really doesn't cost the community a lot of money. But not in the case of your district. You don't have a high building aid ratio. If you end up going to borrow money, you really, it's, you know, coming out of your pocket, you know, the bond council fees, all those borrowing costs.
No, I, I totally understand. I just wanted to get some comparative data. So if last year, school districts were at 91%, do you have any idea what they were the, the first year of COVID? In, in that same general range of 91?
When, so nine, 2019, 2020, that's the first year of COVID.
Right, right. 1920, and last year was 2021.
Exactly. So this, this year that we just audited is 2021. So we're actually seeing in 2021 that, that a lot of districts still have not, have not returned to pre-COVID level. Okay? So they're still not quite getting back to spending, say, the 95%. Before COVID, a lot of school districts really were in the range of between, like I said, 90% to 95%.
I didn't, I didn't have an understanding of that. Okay, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, and, and my firm audits about 50 school districts.
50?
50, five.
On Long Island? There's about 120 or so on Long Island.
124 on Long Island, that's correct. And, and, you know, I personally handle about 15 audit accounts. Okay? So I'm not speaking for all 50 of my clients, obviously.
Right, but, but you have, you have a, you know.
Right.
You, you have, you have a meaningful amount to compare.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
It's, it's a strong sample size, in my mind.
Agreed, agreed, yeah. And, and I can speak, you know, and that's why I feel comfortable saying that, you know, at 16% overall fund balance in, in relation to your actual expenditures, that's a reasonable percentage of fund balance that you have retained. And then as far as the, you know, how much of the budget has been spent, you have the track record of consistently spending 97, 98, close to 99% of the budget. So, so that's, you know, that's, that's a very, very good ratio, and.
And it sounds like it's higher than most of the districts, or at least the districts that, that you can speak to.
That is correct.
All right, listen, thank you for letting me go out of order. I appreciate it. I just don't know if he was gonna be here, so I thank you.
No problem. And actually, since I opened up the floor, do any questions in regards to, because we're in the special meeting? For the audit report, anyone else in the public have any questions? I'll open it up. Sure, come on up. Come up as well.
How much on the board? May I remove this? I can barely breathe through this.
Just lower it slightly if you want to try to speak into the microphone, but we do have to keep it on.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I just want to follow up on a comment with the auditor mentioned just now. He mentioned that the East Wilston school district budgets are high in a good way.
No, no, I didn't say that. The.
Allen, Mr. Yu, you have to speak in. Why don't you just go into that microphone?
I, I did not mean that the budget was high. The, the exchange with this gentleman is that the district has been spending a high percentage of the budget, okay? If you spend close to 100% of your budget, then that means it's, it's, it's a very reasonable budget, okay? Your budget, your bud, your budget is close to what you actually needed. So that's what I meant when we said high, okay? It's a high usage of the budget.
You, you mentioned that you personally handle about 15 accounts?
Yes.
That your firm handles about 50 school districts in Nassau County. Do you have any opinions or comments to share about, shall we say, the, the budget? If, let's say, if you compare the size of the school districts, the number of students in the, in the school district, or the students over the school district?
Right.
If you compare the size of the school district and, let's say, assess the budgets, how would you compare East Wilston School District? Would you say East Wilston School District is in the upper percentile in terms of the budget, honestly, on a per-student basis?
I, I can only, I can only speak to, you know, every community is obviously different, right? Their priorities are different. You know, one of my clients is a North Shore school district, and their budget is doubled that of East Wilston's, okay? And they've been consistently spending only about 91, 92% of their budget. As a result, their fund, overall total fund balance, including reserves, are also relatively high compared to many other school districts on Long Island. They're very transparent, they've always been very transparent, and therefore, their community continues to support them, okay? But if the State Counselors Office is to go in and audit that particular school district, they would probably label that school district as being, you know, not responsible enough in their budgeting practice. And yet, that particular school district has been utilizing capital reserves to return the unspent funds to the taxpayers. So they've, they've set up, I believe, up to four separate capital reserves now, and, you know, as a result, you know, they were able to, to perform close to $60 million of capital constructions without having to borrow at all. And so that's one of their, you know, they, they felt very proud about that. So it, it's, it's relative, really, to the community, okay? And, you know, in that, as, in that example, you know, despite the fact that their budgets seemingly are too high, and one certainly could argue that, but the community accepts that they are basically setting aside money at the same time for capital construction projects instead of having to go out and bond at a future date.
Understood. I mean, I, the, the example that you gave about the North Shore School District, are you able to provide some comparative facts? Because this school district has about 1,700 students. How many students would there be in that North Shore School District which has a budget that is twice that of East Wilston?
Oh, quite a few, you know, there are quite a few.
That's a very precise answer, but.
I don't think Mr. Yu would be, have, well, I don't, I'm sure you would have access to that information, but that's not what he's looking at necessarily, so I don't know if he would be able to answer that off his, off the top of his head, because I understand what you're trying to get, on a comparative, comparative basis, our budget, X amount of students, X amount of residents, dollars versus similar school districts. I don't know if that, that's really not in his purview of what he does per se.
Understood.
I don't want to speak for you, but it's.
No, no, you're absolutely right. And that's not the focus of the external audit of financial statements either. You know, that information I know is available, you know, as far as, you know, per-student costs, available from the state.
One, one final comment, if I may. You made a remark that the, the increase year-over-year was about $3 million, out of which about 1.6, 1.2 was, let's say, for capital reallocation, and the rest was 1.86 million in, in actual year-over-year increases, out of which about 1.2, if my recollection is right, 1.2 was salaries and other expenses, another, I think.
Staff.
And, staff expenses, yeah, that's correct. And about 0.6, about 1.2 is actually about benefits and so on. Is this a one-time increase for this fiscal year, or is it something that is actually year, that's, that's actually?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the assistant soup answer that.
Yeah, so when you, when he talks about that increase, we're talking about 2021 actual, what we ended up spending versus 1920, what we actually ended up spending. And both years were anomalies because in the spring of 1920, COVID hit, and the school district, except for remote learning, shut down. Transportation stopped, clubs stopped, supervision stopped, sports stopped. So that's why we saw such a drop against what we normally see in salary and staff costs, because everything just stopped except regular contractual education. So then, when we came back in 2021, that came back, but only halfway through the year. So it didn't come back to the extent of pre-COVID activity, but we did have half a year of sports. We didn't have any field trips. There was still a lot of things that did not happen. Some clubs met, some clubs didn't meet. We didn't have a lot of activities that required the supervision based on pre-COVID activities. So the increase is because there was such a drop in activity in 1920 when COVID hit, and it, we started to build it back up to pre-COVID levels in 2021. I, I think that COVID this year, we're gonna see more of a standard increase because more things are being rolled, full year of sports, field trips are coming back into play, supervision's coming back into play, we're doing more activities, we're doing more in-person things for the kids. So there will be a larger increase than under normal circumstances because we're comparing it to a year where we were not fully operational. So we're slowly going back to pre-COVID levels, so that's why you're gonna see an increase in actual-to-actual spend.
I must confess that I did not fully follow the argument, but I appreciate the patience, and I appreciate the kindness of the board to allow me to ask these questions. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kostangue.
My pleasure. No problem. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. So then, seeing no other questions, we're gonna move into the action items. I'm actually gonna take action item number 3.4 first, if I may. I'm gonna ask for a second. Mr. Fallarino, discussion. I just want to, again, acknowledge all the hard work that went into this specifically by our business office, led by Ms. Kostangue. It's not easy. There are many assistant supers of business that do not get clean opinions, do not, do not get unmodified opinions on their reports, and I just want to acknowledge the work of your office and everyone there, because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into this, as well as what Mr. Fallarino said to our audit committee, which are all volunteers, just like us, that give hundreds of hours, countless hours, to spend debating, analyzing, and going through these reports together with our auditor and our business officials. So thank you. So any other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we call for the vote. All in favor? I see five hands. Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm going to move back. Thank you, Mr. Yu. I'm going to move back to item number 3.1. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Ms. Kostangue, I'm just gonna ask you to comment on all the reserve funds in one discussion item, if you may, even though I'm taking them separately, i.e. what the board maxed out and what you're recommending now.
Yes. So back in June, as is required, we recommended maximum amounts that could, the surplus funds could be put into reserves at the end of June 30, 2021, and the board did approve putting maximum amounts into various reserves. As we closed our books and we knew what surplus we were dealing with, and thinking ahead and analyzing the level of dollars that were in each of the reserves, we, we felt that these, we believe these are the best reserves to invest those surplus funds, the major one being the capital reserve. That's the 2019 capital reserve. This funding, this surplus also is some of the leftover surplus from 1920 COVID money. So, you know, it's, it was good that we could take it and put it into that capital reserve. I think it is going to, if the community approves it and allows us, and votes on it coming spring, it will allow us to start the air conditioning project in Wheatley for the cafeteria and the gymnasium. That's part of that 2019 reserve. So I think that probably move that project up probably a year to get that done. The other reserves, you know, we look at each one and what we anticipate going forward in the next few years, what would be, you know, possibly varying costs to the district and the, on. and the unemployment, and the reserve for retirement for TRS. We felt those were, were good reserves to put the surplus into, and that those would best help us to balance our budgets in the next few years going forward. Because in, you know, putting money into the reserves is really a future saving, so that we can use that money and draw down on it to help us offset any budget increases related to those particular expenses. So this is why we are recommending these three funding...
Which we have historically done, based on the recommendations of not only yourself and your office, but the Financial Advisory Committee as well, to help offset those big spikes in budget building. So thank you. And I just want to comment for the public, just to remind the public, the way the capital reserve fund works is, now that we're able to fund a big chunk of it, you'll see in this May's ballot, we'll put a, I'm sure administration's gonna recommend that the board adopt the resolution, so that we spend. So the public already voted to create the reserve fund. We then fund the reserve fund, and then we have to go back to the public one more time. Projects are still same, everything's actually the same, and say, okay, now that we funded it, can you please spend it? So that's what Ms. Kasangue is referring to there. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, we just add that on page eleven of the financial statements. There's a table that shows the movement in the capital restricted fund balances. So it shows the opening balance at the end of last fiscal year, and all the movement into and out of these reserves to come up with the balance as of June 30th of 2021. So the amounts that are in 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3 match exactly to the amounts that you see being funded into these reserves. So it's very transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm calling for the vote. Item 3.1, all in favor? I see five hands. Motion, item passes five zero. 3.2, may I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing no additional discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes five zero. Thank you. And I'm gonna take item number 3.3. May I have a second? Keef, discussion. Seeing no additional discussion, we call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, that's it for the action items. I, I'm just gonna ask one more time, because I said I take open time at the end. Anyone else? Seeing no one from open time, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Mr. Keef, all in favor? Five zero. Thank you very much. Everyone have a nice, safe, healthy evening.